Okay, I'm going to call this special meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the ballot which stands one nation, one God, in his law, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 20, 2022. Excuse me, by posting a notice at the Fork River Post Office, Illinois Harbor Post Office, by filing a copy of the notice with the lazy township clerk as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. We'll call Mr. George.
Mr. Armato.
Here.
Mrs. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy.
I'm here.
Mrs. Downing.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Polino.
Present.
Report of the Superintendent.
Dr. Pereira.
Thank you, for President Polino. We're going to get right into it. I'm going to ask Mr. DeGeorge to present the final budget. And then I'm going to make some additional comments. Slideshow?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need to move?
You have a question.
Okay. Now we sit down. It feels good. Okay. I'll look over this screen.
No, it's right here. It's fine. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing for the 2022-2023 school year budget. We begin, as we always do, with our mission and the statement that accompanies that mission, that we inspire excellence. It's our goal for students and staff and strong values and in keeping with our pride and tradition in our district. There's our board, who has been very instrumental through the budget bill process, and it's appreciated. So the issue now, again, is state aid. I know Dr. Pereira is going to probably talk about this same slide as the one we got together in March. 9.2 million by time all is said and done. Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zelinski, and myself sat with local legislators a few weeks ago. They responded, and I know Dr. Pereira is going to probably speak to that in her comments after the presentation, but we are still at it and will not relent. So before we get into the budget itself and how we got from the tentative budget in March to this evening, it's really, I think, important and helpful to go back to Part 1 of the annual budget presentations that we do. And we did this one back in September, September 16, to be exact, and it was on our website the day after. And in what I'm going to read from is the slide that talks about the calendar, the process for the budget bill throughout the year. And it's important for everybody to know, I think, that we don't just get here magically, that from September through January, we are meeting with departmental budget managers, reviewing draft budgets, having public discussions about budget issues. Senior administration takes these issues to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee communicates those to board members, and then we start preparing the budgets. And there are two, right? The tentative budget, which we presented and adopted in March, and here again, what would be the final budget in May. So way back in the tentative budget, in the 24th of March, when we all gathered together, we talked about a lot of things that really bespeak the process that I just outlined again for us, that, again, it just doesn't automatically happen, and no one person decides what it is we need to do or will finally do to get from a tentative budget, from any budget, unbalanced budgets to the tentative, and again, from the tentative to the final. So just a reminder, we decided that in order to help balance the budget for the tentative budget, we would make almost $800,000 worth of prepayments. The bulk of that was bus leases that were due next year but were paying this year, and Chromebook lease purchase that we would budget to pay next year that we are going to pay this year, and about $118,000 to retirees that we would have had to pay next year that we decided to be fiscally smart and to pay them before the end of this year. That, again, that freed up almost $800,000 toward balancing that tentative budget. In addition, we spoke about over $1.2 million of cuts. The high dollar value of those was the elimination of 12 kindergarten para professionals that were supposed to be put in the ESER grant, but we had to make a choice between kindergarten paras and preschool paras, and preschool paras were the ones that we decided that we would pay in that ESER money. We would absorb five positions for teachers at about 262,000, other vacancies and supplies and a decrease in benefits, a decrease in the cost of natural gas and electric, again, all $1.2 million in cuts. So a word about the para professionals, right? Everything we do in public education, and you know this from every budget presentation we do from the beginning of the year, is driven by code, law, and rule. So the code for kindergarten paras is they are 25 or more, more than 25 students in a class with one teacher, we are obligated legally to put a para professional in that classroom. At this point, you don't see that. Should that change between now and the time school opens, the district has no choice, really, but to restore paras to classrooms where they are needed by code. In addition to the $1.2 million in cuts and the $800,000 or so in prepayments, we moved over $1 million of budget items from the operating budget into the ESER grant. A couple of special ed teaching positions, about $440,000 worth of preschool paras, which I spoke about just a minute ago, Chromebook purchases, and late buses in clubs. In order to keep all those things, we were able to move them into the ESER money. So when all was said and done, it took just about $3 million of prepayments, reductions, and movements of operating budget items to balance a tentative, present a tentative budget which was balanced. So I take time saying that because to remind everyone that it just didn't happen and to remind everyone that it's very, very difficult to get from where we were with the state aid cuts to a balanced tentative budget. All right. That said, how did we get from that tentative budget to this final budget? Well, when we presented the tentative budget, we spoke about the fact that the Department of Education had decided to take away $447,000 from our local tax levy because they thought we were benefits, we benefited from the Chapter 44 benefit reductions. We filed an appeal, and as I mentioned when we presented the tentative budget, we won that appeal. And so in order to present this budget, we put the money back in into the tax levy, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. Also, we restored logically the things that we took away in creating the tentative budget to resolve that $447,000 revenue deficit. And as you can see, preschool tuition, benefits restoration, we're still at 5% increase, although I will say, until I'm not here anymore, I'm nervous about that still. We put back some much-needed instructional supplies, maintenance supplies, and training, which we desperately need to do. The second thing that happened between the tentative budget and this evening is an administrative restructuring, which Dr. Pereira spoke about some time ago, and we took some, the board took some action on at the April meeting to move some administrators around. So there's some movement out of guidance and some principal moves, office, my office's salary, and then some other administrative reorganizations that we had to reflect in the final budget. In addition, we learned pretty recently that, and I'll say this, I know nobody's here, but for those at home, we're very appreciative. Every single person on this board is very appreciative for the good relationship that we have with our municipal counterparts. Very appreciative. They, for the past couple of years, have been able to pick up the cost of trash removal and recycling, but they have budget issues too, and they informed us, unfortunately, that they would no longer be able to do that. So we have no choice but to restore budget $130,000 that we didn't have in the tentative budget in this final budget to budget for the cost of removal of trash and recycling. But again, very clear, we're not, it's not a political issue. It is absolutely an operational issue. Very, very grateful for the relationship that we have and the fact that they did pick this up for us a couple of years. So in order to do that, though, in order to make room for that, things had to move around, and we had to talk about this and decide to make some painful decisions, at least at this point. And one of them was to, at least, that's the thought right now, to terminate the Class 3 officer program, which is something no one wants to do, but to add back out of that money, to take $81,000 and add two additional school safety officers, so that we now have three, still with the hope that between now and the September opening of school, that we will be able to either put all school safety officers or restore the Class 3 officer program, one way or the other. I feel pretty confident that that will happen, but I can't say with absolute certainty right now, tonight, that I could do it tonight, but I feel confident that Dr. Pereira and Ms. Sylvia will be able to work to resolve that. We had to make a couple of additional small adjustments in tuition for state facilities, which is a Department of Education item. We removed a couple of grade-level coordinators, which we just don't need and we can't afford at this point. And there's a small app that we had to eliminate, and of course, the total reductions matches the total additional, I mean, the total additional appropriations matches the total additional revenue of $447,000, which is how we got from where we were in March to where we are tonight. All right. So as always, same pretty much slide deck from here on out. The point of this really is to underscore the major contribution in the operating, of the operating budget. It is 93% of the total $78 million budget. I also want to point out that the total district budget decreased almost $12 million or 13% from last year. That's huge. That's huge. Debt service. So we have debt, and here are our two outstanding issues of debt. The total right now in regional principal is just about $28 million. Next year, we will pay principal and interest payments of over $3.5 million, which will, at the end of the next school year, leave us with a balance of $11.1 million in principal. For those who are interested in such things, those payments are made through, from October of 2022 all the way through to April of 2023, and all of our debt will be off the books by the end of the 2029, 2030 school year. So we'll be debt-free if we can make it between now and then. Grants, again, continues to be not a large percentage of our overall budget. It's a very important source of revenue for us. If you were here when we made the presentation on the ESER grant, you will know what that means. If not, it's still on our website, so please take a look at that. We just gave a pretty good example of how we're taking over $1 million of operating budget items and putting them into the ESER grant for the next couple of years. So we're grateful to have that opportunity. So now the big budget, the operating budget. Let's talk about revenue. Again, these are the categories of revenue. Property taxes account for 71% of total revenue in the operating budget. This categorical state aid, 20%, so between the two of them, it accounts for 91% of our total almost $73 million budget. And again, the operating budget decreased from year to year over $3.2 million or almost four, a little over 4.25%. The tax levy. As I mentioned, when we got together in March, that operating budget levy was $407,000 less, but now it's fully restored to its maximum amount. A statutory 2% increase, which is, we can't take anymore, then that would give us the total debt service budget on the property tax levy for, of $3 million. There's a decrease, 51.9, rather, and then there's a $3 million payment for debt service, which decreases, as I said, every time we pay off debt, the total debt decreases. So a net increase in property tax levy of 1.74%. So again, I'm sorry that folks are not here because the last time we got together, there were, last couple of times, there were some comments regarding the property taxes. And I don't think, in my impression anyway, that people were necessarily upset that it was the cost of it, because on a household, as we'll get to, it's not very big, but they were concerned about, I guess, getting what they paid for, right? So I thought about that a lot and reflected on it, and I think that's an excellent point, and that is what we strive to do. I don't believe we raise taxes just to raise taxes and not account for putting out the best education that we could possibly put out. Now, I'm pretty fortunate. I have a front row seat to senior administration, a seat at the table, and I've watched, month after month, Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Dowd, Mrs. Amos, and the rest of the team work very, very hard to make sure that taxpayers and everyone in our town has the best school district it can possibly have. There's no question in my mind, and I'm very fortunate and privileged to have had that front row seat to that, otherwise I wouldn't know. But it's true, and I think you start to see some of that when the last meeting, we had Mr. Dowd up here representing the administrative group and talking about test scores and slicing and dicing the data and saying, hey, you know what? It's not all that bad. It's better than, at least we're making it seem in the public, and I'm very happy to say that it is not lost on us that the taxpayers need to get the bang for their buck. And I believe everyone is working very, very hard on the instructional side of the House to make that happen. State aid, why bother talking about that anymore? Fund balance. Those who have listened to the thrilling audit presentations have learned that we are managing our fund balance in such a way, we are creating an available source where we can use on one-time items. In the past three years or so, and this will be the fourth, we've worked with Mr. Zelinski and his crew to purchase new curriculum, to make sure that we're at the forefront of the NJ SLS. Reserves, just about $3.8 million we're taking from our capital reserve, and if you've watched the meetings over the past few months, you know that we have queued up the replacement of public address systems at all of our schools, very important safety project, to replace boilers at Cedar Creek and the middle school. That will be the final replacement of budget, of boilers. Now, they'll all be, or none of them will be old anymore. They'll all be pretty new. And renovations of the STEM lab. And for those who do not know what that is, science, technology, engineering, math, what happened to the A, Mr. Zelinski? Wasn't it steam at one point?
It can be both.
It can be both. So very important, if you've been in the STEM lab and you know how old it is, it seems that Einstein himself was a student in that room. It was just that old. So we're doing a pretty good job of moving forward to create a renovated space for our students. Appropriations. Again, no secret, right? Compensation of benefits, the lion's share of our budget, which makes the rest of it very difficult to manage. And again, same budget to budget as last time, the same programs that we talk about, instruction, getting the lion's share of the budget. And again, just to point out, what you already know, 11 of the 16 categories decrease from last year, this year to next year, and it's a $3.2 million and 4.25%. Per pupil costs, that right now looks like our projected enrollment in September. That will change, it always does, but that's a pretty good estimate. So that gives us per pupil costs of $17,000 or a little more than $17,000, which still is almost $1,700 below the statewide median for school districts of our size and type. And administrative cost per pupil, again, I know I get it all the time, we have too many administrators, but data tells us that we have too few and that the cost of those administrators is significantly below the regional limit. And you can check these, if you are so inclined, Taxpayers' Guide to Educational Spending online, and 2023 Budget Guidelines for our Southern Region here. So property taxes. Again, two components, as I said, operating budget and the debt service portion. That is how we calculate the current tax rate, that's the formula. So we take the total taxes to be raised from a few slides ago, divided by the assessment in the town, which we get from the tax assessor, which gives us a current rate for the 2022 year of 1.382. So what if you're a homeowner? How do you figure out what that means to you? You take this formula and you plug in the assessed value of your property, divide it by 100, multiply it times that rate, and that should be your school portion of property taxes. And here's an example on the average home. Again, we get the average home values from the tax assessor. So we take last year's tax rate of 1.369, compare it, the delta, to the projected tax rate for this year, and we get a increase of .013, less than two tax pennies for those who speak in tax penny. For dollars, it's $66 and change for the year, $5.52 per month. So next steps, right? By 48 hours from right now, we're obligated to post what's called the user-friendly budget for our website. We will submit the budget probably tomorrow, July 1. Here we go again. The 2020 budget is acted, and then the whole thing begins over and over again. So before I say thank you, I really wanted to go back to our public budget presentations from the beginning of the year. So in October, which is Part 2 of our annual two-parter, we spoke a lot about budget management boiling down to two and only two things, right? Number one, bear in mind that the budget is a plan. And number two, plans change. In fact, I can guarantee you that by the time I go sit down, something is going to change. That's the way it is. We're going to force the issue. We're going to try everything, as I said a few slides ago, to make changes to this budget. Because I'll tell you this much, from my perspective and all the budgets that I've worked on in my career, this is by far the one I am least happy about. I understand it's fair, I do, in that it is cuts across the board, but I will tell you, and I know nobody's happy, there isn't one happy person in this room about the budget, but we will fight hard to make changes, to put things back where they belong. And as I've said to a couple of folks before the meeting, I'm very confident that we will be able to extricate ourselves from issues between now and the time that school opens. I'm very confident that that will happen. But for now, this is the budget. I do appreciate the hard work of Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zelinski, Ms. Sylvia, and the entire admin team and the board, as always. It's an honor to have served you, and I appreciate that very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, and it's unfortunate that you say that this is the most challenging budget as you sail off into retirement and begin your next chapter. Sylvia, we're going to have our hands full, all right, next year as we move forward. So thank you again, Mr. DeGeorge, and I'm just going to segue into a few things that Mr. DeGeorge touched upon, and that is that back on, in early March, we did meet with Senator Connors, and we did talk about the challenges, just to make him aware and to ask for his assistance. And that resulted in a letter that we sent to Governor Murphy on March 24. And, you know, we received a response that we expected, but the next step is to sit down with the appropriate people at the Department of Education to continue to talk about the formula that they've applied, the unfairness of it, and the amount of money that has been cut from our budget, because that would be the logical next step. So we're waiting to hear from him. We just sent him an email not too long ago. He sent us a letter and, you know, stated that, having now received a response from the department, which has been apprised of the serious fiscal challenges that the district is facing, our delegation is inquiring if you wish us to proceed with scheduling a meeting with an appropriate department representative, to which we replied yes. So we will wait and see what comes of that. In the meantime, you know, we will adopt the final budget for tonight, but that does not mean that we are going to stop exploring options on how to restore some of the very serious cuts that we've had to make, including school safety and the support for our students. So I know there's not one person up here on the dais that disagrees with me, and so we will continue to work hard. So just because we're adopting the final budget doesn't mean that we will stop exploring options on how to get to where we were not too long ago. And we worked, we've worked really hard where safety and security is concerned. We've installed our vestibules, we've implemented Alice training, we've hired our school safety officers, our class 3 officers, we put kindergarten para professionals in place to support our students and our teachers, and the list goes on. That's just to name a few. So again, I'm going to reiterate what Mr. DeGeorge said. We are not happy with this budget at all. And we will continue to fight, and we will continue to explore those options and see where they take us. So those, that concludes my comments for tonight for President Polino.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. At this time, we can open the floor to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, affiliation, intend to make a statement. Comments will be limited to agenda item only. Comments will be addressed to the board president. Comments will be made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes, and no audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. Mrs. DeSensio.
Regina DeSensio, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. My first comment is something that Mr. DeGeorge mentioned. There's no one here. This meeting was advertised since January with the regular meeting schedule. Don't ask me why no one's here. It's not my job to tell people when meetings are. Until a moment ago, I was the only one here. Mr. Rosoli walked in. Very glad to see him. And Ms. Sharon Sylvia is the only other person in this room besides the board and administration. So I'm just letting the public know, you know, if you don't come, you can't say anything from home watching this on TV. I just have a quick question. Has there been any news on the S2 lawsuit at all? Any current news? Nothing. How long is it now? Two, three years?
I'm sorry?
How long is it now that that's been ongoing? About two or three years? I can't recall the date it was commenced.
Oh, right, right, right. It started way back in 2019, 2020.
Wow. Okay.
So this is one, two, three, four.
Thank you. And my condolences on this budget, you know, the state is just, there's no rhyme or reason to what they do sometimes.
Thank you. Mr. Rosoli? Mr. Rizzoli?
Sorry I'm late, I just got in from Florida.
Obviously, you can tell.
Couple of things. Mr. DeGeorge, I wasn't here, so I apologize. What is the amount that's going to be raised to meet the budget through taxation of Lacey residents?
Right. The total will be $54,999,971. That's an increase on the property, the general budget of $2, but net with a...
Yeah, on the property tax being raised for everybody.
1.74.
1.74.
Yes.
Okay. So, from what I saw, 1.4 is all the extracurriculars. So that would take a big chunk, and that's not fair and efficient education, according to the New Jersey State Education Commission, the New Jersey Education, for the Department of Education in the state, evidently, they don't like the way you think. Because either they're all wrong, or we're all wrong. I don't know which, but all I'm saying is if the Department of Education in the state of New Jersey says, "We're doing more than a fair and efficient education, and we're not cutting enough to meet what they think we should be," then they must be wrong. But wait a minute, wait a minute. Could the state be wrong? Could we be the only ones that are right? Yes, you are cutting a lot. Yes, I understand it, it really hurts. More than anything, it hurts the kids. Another question, and I ask this kind of every year. How many National Merit Scholars do we have this year?
One.
One. One. Now, I always compare this system, this district, to a district that I used to go to the meetings at 30 years ago before I came to Forkett River, Republican-run town, basically the same size, square footage, square acreage, basically the same demographic mass, and they got nine National Merit Scholars.
Right, but you know what, Mr. Rizzoli, you come every month and you make those comments, and, you know, we had zero, so to me, one is a success. If we had two, you'd say nine.
Well, that's a 100% increase.
Well, it's an increase nevertheless. Does that mean that we just stop working and don't increase it to two and five and 10?
What I'd like to see is more on the academic side than anything else.
Well, but you weren't here last month to see our presentation, and it was a very positive presentation. So I'm going to encourage you to go on our website and take a look at that, because there are a lot of things to celebrate. Does that mean that we stop working? No, it doesn't.
No, I don't want you to stop working. I think that there are some...
You only point out the negative, you never point out the positives. That's all we're asking you to do.
Well, there's some people in the district that are being paid by us that I think should stop working through layoff. That's the way I look at it. I personally think that the Forkett River School should be closed, we should have bigger class sizes, we should concentrate more on academics, not as much on extracurriculars, and use that money to try to improve our kids and get them more ready for the world, which is mean, like me.
Well, but you're entitled to your opinion, but you think bigger class sizes is going to help academic achievement? You're wrong.
No, but it sure is going to help the taxpayer here in town.
You can't have it both ways.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is when I look at the teachers as a union, I know that there's three things they really like, and that's salary, benefits, and pension. Now, we do need more people to come up and run on this board that weren't teachers at one time and can take a more objective look at maybe doing something more. Yes, this is all hurtful language coming out of my mouth that I'm spewing. I understand that, okay? But, is the state wrong, or are we wrong? Are we all wrong? Oyster Creek closed, we don't have this luxury anymore. We started this district because Oyster Creek gave us the money to start it so many years ago. It's gone, folks. It's gone. So maybe we have to take really drastic looks and say, maybe we don't need a school system in Lacey. Maybe we'll leave it to the county, maybe we'll leave it to the state. They took the money, they shut down the plant, they're not going to give us that money anymore. Maybe we should just go, somehow go private. I don't know. But, as a taxpayer, I really don't want to spend another dime without measured performance. And I don't see the measured performance. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did we have a clock?
We did.
Visible?
Have a good day.
Or is there another one? Oh, we forgot the correct one.
Okay, no more public comments? So we're going to go to number seven of your meeting outline, Amendment to the 2022-23 School Year Tentative Budget. Motion?
Move.
Any discussions?
Yeah, you can, yes, you will do it after the motion second. Yes. So I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Me, move.
Okay, and I'm sorry, second was?
Second? Who? You got a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Now there's discussion, so you got a moment. So who had discussion?
I have, you know, I refreshed my memory, Dr. Pereira and Mr. DeGeorge. The town paid for the trash, correct?
For two years.
Last year.
And the year before.
And the year before.
Yes.
And that enabled us to have our class three...
That did a lot to help us increase the program, yes.
So, in essence, then, because they're not helping us with trash, we can't pay for the class three officers.
That is one way to look at it.
And I'm assuming that township liaison met with the town?
We did. The finance committee, which is the town liaison, only Mr. Kurt Tollis showed up at the liaison meeting. Yes, we did meet with him.
I'm just, and I think all of us feel this way, I'm just very upset that we're paying all this money to upgrade schools through that project that you mentioned, Mr. DeGeorge, and yet we can't hire our class three officers in today's society. As crazy as this world is, as crazy as the people are anymore, I'm just voicing my displeasure with the whole, you know, thing, so.
Mrs. Downing, as finance chair, I will request another meeting with the town to see if we can have more discussions.
That'd be great.
Okay, so hopefully, this month, we can, we'll request another meeting and hopefully sit down with them again and see, just to discuss it further.
Yeah, because I think, I think we all feel safety is a priority on this board.
Do we have any discussion just on the tentative budget as the debt for number seven? Anything on this? No? Okay. Mr. DeGeorge?
Mr. Armato?
First, I'd like to say, like Regina, my condolences, but great job on getting it done. It was a lot of work, it was a lot of effort, and it was a lot of decisions that aren't popular, but they needed to be made. So congratulations on getting it done, thank you for that, everyone here for doing it. And I'm going to approve this, yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, but I have a lot of comments, storyboard comments.
Oh, okay, sure, but you're okay for now?
Yes, I am.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to vote yes, even though I'm concerned about 60.
Yes, ma'am, noted. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Okay, moving on to number eight, adoption of the 2022-23 School Year Budget Motion.
Move.
Second. Mr. Armato? Okay, got it. Any discussion on the budget?
I do have a question. So I'm assuming we had an increase of students that were homeschooled this year because of COVID? If they return, is that going to help us or hurt us? Like, is this for the numbers that we know of today, or when they're added back? Let's just say they all come back, say there was an extra 50 or 60.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, going back one school year, our homeschool numbers were much higher. So, starting in September, when we went back to school, those numbers started to decrease, but I do believe, looking at where we are, and I don't have it the number right off the top of my head, that we'll start to decrease that as we go forward.
So was that going to, are we going to be...
It'll help us.
It'll help us. And when does that come out? Like, when will we get more funding for them?
So, we, and, Mr. DeGeorge, feel free to jump in, but we do the October 15th count for the ASSA report.
Okay.
And it's a snapshot on that day of that enrollment, so between now and October 15th.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and within the budget application is what I would always refer to as a mini ASSA, which is yet another snapshot, but more toward the middle of the year, so it's more current data. But as Dr. Pereira says, and as we spoke a little bit ago, that number that we presented tonight will definitely not be the same. No question about it. And should people return to district, those numbers would be increased for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just going to explain for a minute, number eight is pretty long and pretty kind of complex, I just wanted to go through it so the members of the public are aware. So number seven was to revise the tentative budget. Number eight is to adopt the budget as revised, right? And it includes a demarcation between total expenditures, those funded by taxes, and those funded by other means. Again, the money we spoke about being withdrawn from the capital reserve and the maintenance reserve. For some reason, DOE is always interested in what we're spending on travel, so we have to show that. We've got an alternate revenue projection for the Special Education Medicaid Initiative. You authorize the superintendent and the business minister to implement the budget. And of course, it is the tax schedule that tomorrow morning, we will forward over to our counterparts at the township. Fair enough? Fair enough? All right. Well called. Mr. Armato?
Approved.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to open up the floor for board comments, but before that, I just want to jump in myself before all the board members give their comments, and then I'll clean it up at the end. I just want to tell the public, this has been a very difficult budget, as we know. I want to thank, you know, Mr. DeGeorge, you know, we were $447,000 in a hole with the Chapter 44 healthcare benefits of the state, thinking that we should be paying them more than what we lost. And a lot of people may just sat on and accepted it for what it was, but he did not do that, and he went after them with an appeal and got the money back. So I applaud him for that, and thank you, Mr. George. It puts us in a better position, even though we're not in a great position, better than we were. The one thing that resonates with this contract, and it's not contract, the budget, it's not the best, but one thing that resonates throughout the board, I just want to say that the one thing we all agree on is, like Mr. Peters always says, children first. Security is paramount for us. You know, we are losing our class three police officers in there, but we are going to, after this living, breathing document gets approved tonight, work on getting somebody in some type of uniform back in our schools. We know that that's a much-needed thing, as well as some of the things that we've done away with in the budget. We're going to work on getting people, paras whatever we can, back in the classroom. So it's not a done deal. It's like we said, it's an ever-living, breathing document, and we're going to do what we have to do to get the safety thing brought up to speed. So I just want to preface that for our board members, that we all agree on that, and Dr. Pereira and Mr. DeGeorge and Miss Sylvia, it's not a question about it, it's definitely something we're going to work on. So with that, I'm going to start, I'll start with Mrs. McAvoy, why not this time?
Oh, sure. Okay. So I agree, not happy with this budget. It's been a work in progress, and Mr. George said plans do change, and I'm prepared to fight hard to get back, to have a security officer in all six schools. Security and safety of the students is paramount, and whatever we have to do, we need to get a security officer in each school. So I don't know how we're going to do it, but I think everyone up here is prepared to fight and find a way to do that. I think that's our number one priority. Another thing to me that is a priority is getting back to 12 kindergarten paras that are not in the budget. I substituted today, and I was a kindergarten para, and it was difficult. It was such a hard day. I don't see a lot of learning going on with kindergarten without a para in the room, between going to the bathroom, blowing their nose, winter breaks, washing their hands. This is an important grade where the students learn, they're learning to read, and without an assistant, a para in the classroom. And I'm finance chairperson, and until yesterday, I didn't realize we were cutting all 12 para positions in kindergarten. I know I missed the slide, but I don't think we talked about it enough at the finance committee meetings or in Friday notes. I really didn't realize it. I found out yesterday, and I just want to fight for that. It's so important, and students are first, so we need to fight for that. I hope the whole board's ready to fight for that. We also are not replacing a guidance counselor at the high school, and one of our priorities as a Board of Education is the guidance department, revamping the guidance department. And I feel that if we don't replace the guidance counselor that is retiring, we don't have a lot to work with. I don't see how we're revamping the guidance department unless we replace the retiring guidance counselor. So I hope this board's, I think we're coming together, I feel that everybody has the same priorities, and so I hope we're prepared to look at the budget more closely. Yes, we approved the dollar amount, but plans do change. Mr. Rizzoli, I really wish you were here, I hope you're watching this, but you just, you say one thing, and it makes no sense. How can academics be first if we're going to increase class sizes? And yes, I'm an educator, I'm a proud educator, and I know that you cannot increase academics or concentrate on academics if you have large class sizes. So maybe you need to go back in the classroom. I don't know what, but you come here, you speak out, and it makes absolutely no sense. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
Okay, Mrs. McAvoy probably said everything that was on my mind. Yeah, I know. First of all, I want to thank Mr. DeGeorge for all your work on this budget and throughout your career here at Lacey. You put 100% into it, and we really appreciate it. We drive you nuts. I know this year even more than ever, but we appreciate it. And Sharon, you could still run, you have time.
No, actually, she can't, we voted.
Next meeting, she wants to make it on. Yeah. As I said before, I already spoke about my concerns about the safety in today's society. And I have one question, Mr. DeGeorge, are there more retirements possibly on the horizon? I know most of them had already told you, but are there some little maybe possibility there's some more?
I will commit to, yes, I've heard there are possibilities.
Okay.
Yes.
So that could be more money for us if we don't have to replace them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, good, that's good news. I won't keep you to it, but it's good news. Every year, this budget gets tighter and tighter, and every year, the state seems to love Lakewood and love some of our inner-city schools up north, but doesn't seem to like Ocean County schools. So I just, you know, it's really hurting us, and I agree with Donna that disagrees with Mr. Rizzoli. Class sizes, you know, small class sizes are where you need to be. And we need sports for our kids, we need activities in sports, that's part of an education. So I'm glad to see none of that has been cut, am I correct?
That's correct.
All curriculum stands the same, all sports stay the same, activities.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, and then we have the trash, that's related to safety. So that's it, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Mr. Armato?
Thank you. I have a question, and then I'd like to make a statement if I can. We chose pre-K paras over kindergarten paras. Is there any reason why we didn't take some pre-K paras and some kindergarten paras?
Honestly, Mr. Armato, it's all code-driven, the code that speaks to the operation of preschool is different, and I think logically, although I'm only married to an educator, I'm not an educator myself, but certainly more stringent... is different, and I think logically, although I'm only married to an educator, I'm not an educator myself, but certainly more stringent than the same codes for kindergarten, and...
And just maybe let me add, maybe Mr. Armatto doesn't know, so if a classroom has more than 25 students, a para is required in kindergarten.
Okay.
Less than that, it's optional.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Last night, there was a varsity lacrosse game at Cloon Field. Last week, there was a boys', or a men's varsity lacrosse game at Cloon Field. Every year, there's a varsity soccer game, and soccer games, men and women, at Hebrew Park. We're talking about a budget here, and how we're going to try to fit a square peg into a round hole, and we're trying very hard, and again, as I said earlier, congratulations on getting it done to keep our schools running. Yet, we need revenue. We need to drive revenue, and we have a revenue maker right outside, and I think we really seriously need to consider, as a board, of turning that field outside into a multipurpose field to drive revenue into this district. I love the tradition and everything that goes along with that field outside, but it's not Lions football, it's Lions sports, and that field should be made available to all that put on the Lion uniform. And when I walk down, when I have to go to Cloon Park to watch a high school game, it's not the same feeling, and that home-field advantage is gone. When I have to go to Hebrew Park to watch a game, that home-field advantage is gone. And I think we really need to do something that would drive revenue, and unfortunately, that means removing the grass and putting down a multipurpose field that will, that will drive revenue back into the district. It'll drive revenue with parking, concession, admission, fees to use the fields, and you can run tournaments, you can do a million things, and guess what? It's maintenance-free. You need a broom. You need a broom to clean it up. The worst thing that we'll have to do is maybe pick up a couple of bottles or whatever from people that don't know where a trash bin is, but other than that, we have a real big revenue driver right outside, and we're not discussing it enough, and I think it needs to be taken into serious consideration, to have our business administrator worry about where we're going to get money, where we're going to take from Peter to pay Paul, pay bills early, cut pre-K, I mean, cut kindergarten paras so we can have pre-K paras, that's not the battle, that's not, that's not smart business. And smart meaning specific, measurable, attainable, realistic targets. We're not doing that. We're not doing that, and we did everything we were supposed to do. Congratulations to the board on doing everything they had to do to get this school up and running. They did everything they had to do to give kids a great education, and I'm speaking as a parent who still has kids in this school. And they're getting a great education, sometimes I question it, but that's a parent. But nonetheless, I'm very happy with the way my kids are walking out of this school, and when they graduate from this school, I am beyond pleased, okay? Beyond pleased, but we got to do something. We have to drive revenue into this school if we want to stop talking about budget and start building this thing from the ground up. Once again, Mr. George, I'm going to miss you. You've been very nice to me and very professional with me, and a big impact on some of the things I've been able to do thus far on this board, so thank you for your professionalism, thank you for your kindness, and wish you the best, and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armatto.
Mr. Polino, we'll put Mr. Armatto's suggestion on the finance committee meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Minutes, okay, to discuss on the agenda.
You know, just with that, Mr. Armatto, you know, that's probably like a referendum-type of thing, you're talking millions to bring that field up to...
I can give you an actual number.
It's going to be billions, because I dealt with somebody who is in another town that's replacing their, just their soccer turf, and it's, they're already up to a few million, so that's something that, it could be a great moneymaker, but how long is it going to take us to make back the millions?
10 years.
To put into it, so...
I can give you the business use case.
So, how long, you say, 10 years?
It says about eight to 10 years to make the money back.
It'd be another solar panel conspiracy. Right, Mr. Scanlon?
I'll send...
See, and it's done, it's over. Done. Mr. Claus?
Okay, all right, so I think we're all in agreement that when the money hopefully will start coming in, we can start moving things, security's priority, we need to get them back in. So we're, the whole board is in agreement, for once, we are together, and I'm so happy.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, it's good. Again, the paras need to also be brought back, that's a huge priority. I know we're a couple students short in each class, but we need to bring them back. I didn't realize they were, are they getting their pink slips soon today? We need to be able to bring them back, yeah. And then the guidance counselor, I feel like this year, we've really come a long way with changing things in guidance, and if we don't get that guidance counselor back, it's going to set us back, we can't go backwards, so I think if we can concentrate and we all agree on those three things, then that would, instead of throwing other pieces in the mix, we can just drive that forward. And regards now to the field, we did have a meeting last year about, just ideas about revenue. There was an idea, I don't know, Will, if you had a chance to look into it, with the renting of the bubble that Donovan does, to see if that was profitable. That's a company, I believe, that comes in, it's their bubble, they rent our space, and then we do have, well, they have access, it's not a lot of access, which I heard is part of the problem over there, and I'm not sure really who would make the revenue, if the company would make the revenue, or if we would just get land-use revenue, so it's something to definitely look into.
We have talked to people over there, we'll talk to you after the meeting.
Yeah.
It's usually land-use revenue.
Yeah.
They're leasing the space, that's all you get.
Right, so, I mean, yeah, okay, so, but we do need to start putting things on paper, like I, you know, said last month, and let's make a plan, even if it's, you know, the grant writer, anything, we need to just step forward. If it doesn't work, then it doesn't work, but we need to try. So, you know, any ideas, I'll gladly present to the committees or, you know, administration. And that's it, and thank you, Pat, for, this was a hard budget, I'm glad it's not over, we still need to keep moving our pieces, and that's it, I appreciate your work, thank you.
Mr.?
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Mr. Peters?
Thank you. I'd like to start off with a question, and I don't know who can answer it, but, you know, we see some deductions and reductions in force. Who goes through the budget and says, you know what, let's get rid of the cops, let's get rid of the para professionals, let's get rid of this? Where did that come from to get on this actual, who can answer that for me? Who made that decision to get rid of the police? Who made that final decision to get rid of the para professionals? Because I was just told about it, well, Mr. DeGeorge, apparently, last meeting, and I blame myself and the board for not catching it, but it was on his presentation, and it really came across, two days ago, I actually found out about it, and I blame myself and us for not catching that. But who actually put that on the cutting board, is the question I have.
Well, you have to, you know, so it goes through a committee, but again, the Class III officers are contractual thing, so that'd be something we'd have to contractually deal with again, so if we sign up, we're bound by contract.
The question I'm asking is, who said let's get rid of the Class III officers?
Because they're up for renewal, so that's what the committee brings that up.
So the finance committee, you guys, the finance committee?
Well, we don't take, we don't do it as, you know, the committee doesn't take its own steps to do things, so that was brought up, so, again, just like, all of us missed the fourth slide of the tentative budget about the paras, so this is not a surprise that our Class III officers are going. So you're acting surprised that this is...
No.
Yeah, you are.
I'm asking...
You're acting surprised that all of a sudden, where did this come from? So the fact of the matter is, this was spoken of a long time ago, that, and you knew that this was going to happen, so...
But I'm asking...
But let me, let me, let me jump in, so we just recently, because remember, we're building our budget, and the township is building their budget.
Correct.
So, you know, it wasn't long ago that we were informed that township would, could no longer pay for trash and recycling, and when we developed the Class III program, it was contingent on the township paying for that, so it's kind of like a hand-in-hand type thing. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's a developmental thing over time, dependent on what they inform us. So we just found out about them not being able to pay for trash and recycling, it was a logical step then to make that decision.
I understand what you're saying, President, but the question I'm asking is, who made the decision on that line, I almost said, you know what, cops and paras are going to go, that's all I'm asking?
Mr. Peters, as far as I know, in every finance meeting I've been in, we did not discuss eliminating the 12 paras.
Okay. The question I'm asking, who did? Who said let's eliminate paras instead of something else?
Um...
Just so I know as a board member to learn, because it was a shock to me of the paras, and I admit, again, it was my fault at Mr. DeGeorge's meeting, someone had to say, hey, let's get rid of the paras and the preschool program.
Dr. Pereira, was that discussed in your DLT meetings? Is that where it came from?
You know, Mrs. McAvoy, there have been so many budget conversations, I can't possibly pinpoint at what point that conversation was had, but remember, again, I'm going to point back to the fact that it's a process, that we whiteboard things that are going to be eliminated, things go up, things come down, so, yeah, it was definitely a discussion during a meeting.
So, Mr. Peters, what's the point? We all missed it, so what are you trying to get at? I don't, I'm down here trying to listen.
I'm trying to get at, I'm trying to figure out who was the source that said, let's get rid of the police officers, let's get rid of paras. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, for...
Well, when it came up, my memory, I'll give you my memory of it, okay? The paras, we'll start with the police officers. Police officers were in there until the township came and said, oh, we're not giving you the money for the garbage anymore, and then we, we have a problem. We have a $130,000 problem. It's like, and we can't not pick up the garbage. So we're still negotiating with them. We met earlier tonight, I think, some, it was even said, that we're going to meet with them again.
I'm going to request a meeting, yes.
Okay, so it's an ongoing thing, and we're trying, we're trying to see if we can come to some sort of an agreement to alleviate the shortfall that was created when they created their budget, which was probably February or March, while we're in the middle of this, and all of a sudden, and we're getting hit with this, by the way, not just from the township cutting the garbage, but we're getting hit with it from other areas too, where all of a sudden, this money's not available, that money's not available, okay, so what are we going to do? One of the things we were discussing was going somewhere else and finding a different solution for school safety officers. Now, where did it actually get left out of the budget? I actually don't think it did, because we were still talking about finding a way to still have them there next year. We were talking about that yesterday, while we were in a dead space with negotiations, waiting for the LTA team to finish talking with the mediator. So we were sitting there, waiting for them to come back, and that was one of the discussions we had, is how are we going to come up with the money to do it? So it's one thing to say, when did you cut it? But it's another thing to realize that, yeah, it's not in the budget right now, but we're still looking for a way to get it in there. It's an ongoing thing, and I think everybody here is kind of forgetting that. As far as the paras go, I know when it came up, I said, well, how can you, and that's when you told me that if it's less than 25 students in the classroom, we don't have to have the para, but, at that time, also, we discussed, but we want them in there. Well, it's an ongoing thing, or are we going to try and get them in there? And my understanding is that they're not getting pink slipped, they're getting moved to other positions.
Well, but again, it's a process, so...
It's a process, right.
Right, so they do get the non-renewal letter, and then we look to see where the need is, and we'll start to, right.
Right, so it's, it's, it's hard to answer your question the way you're asking it, just because it's not something that we really said, oh, it's done, that's it, boom, they're gone, never again. No, we're still trying to figure out how to get them in there, and where the real needs are for having somebody in there full-time, and what schools can share.
I understand we're trying to keep them, and I thank you as a finance chair, trying to, you know, keep them there, I appreciate that. The only reason I brought this question up was, it's a huge concern for me, massive concern, and as every other board member, it's a concern, but I just don't understand how that was eliminated, because we would be, if we don't find the money, we would be the only schools, and every school in Ocean County has a police officer, whether it be a township or county school, every school has an armed officer in it, and for the life of me, I cannot figure out who or why someone would say, let's make this deduction. Why couldn't we say, cut down on grass seed for the field, and cut down on this, and find this out, but for some reason, someone said, let's eliminate the cops? And it just baffles me that someone came up, and I asked a question, who it was, and I still haven't got a straight answer of who's idea was to eliminate the police. That's what baffles me, because right, again, the county schools have sheriffs in there, the township schools have armed police officers in there from that township in there, and I just don't understand why the first, one of the first thing was, well, let's get rid of the police, they took away our garbage, let's get rid of the police. That's, that was just my question. So, Mr. Armatto, to help out you a little bit with your answer there, the football field, when it was built, constructed in 1982, the football field was constructed with a severe pitch in the middle for drainage. So when there's a football game and it rains the day before, it drains pretty quicker than other fields, because a lot of fields are flat, and our fields has a big arch in the middle of it going to the side. So in order, we looked into it when I was on the facilities committee and the finance committee years ago, we did discuss about clearing that field and putting turf and lights in there to make it an all-purpose field, but Mr. Polino was correct, it's millions of dollars to do that, and I don't think we're going to make a 10-year turnaround out. We can look into that, I'd love to visit it again, you know, into that again, but I know that it's going to be millions of dollars, because not only do you just have to bring in the turf, the whole entire field has to be graded, drainage has to be put in there, there's numerous aspects of it involved, just, and just putting the turf down on top of that field.
Thank you for your feedback. I sold those fields for two years. I was responsible behind the field going into Central Regional, I was responsible for the football field at Monmouth University, I was responsible for a lot of fields in New Jersey. You're right, it's costly, expensive, but it's not up, it's in the $2 millions of dollars. Okay, yes, it does take a lot of work to build that field, but it's only a beneficiary for everyone, the players, the visiting players, it looks great with the new lights, with the new track, you can have a Lions logo in the end zone and in the middle, it'll be great for everyone.
Sounds wonderful and awesome, but my big concern right now are police officers...
You're right.
Guidance counselors...
You're right, but we need money.
And para professionals.
So if you don't want to lose the paras, and you don't want to lose the police officers, we got to drive revenue. We can't drive revenue by bickering, we can drive revenue by coming up with ideas and how we're going to drive revenue, so we could pay for the police officers, so we could pay for the paras.
Awesome idea, it's been across the board in the past, and financially, we figured out that it wasn't worth it at that time.
The past is the past, so we got to move to the future.
Let's move on to Mr. Peters, your comments, if you have any more.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Well, with all the comments that have been made tonight, I would just like to keep this short and sweet, thank Dr. Pereira, Mr. DeGeorge, the administrators and supervisors and individuals that helped get us down to a pretty lean and usable budget, doesn't have the things we wanted necessarily, but it is a working, a living, as you pointed out, a living document, where we can hopefully work out things and get what everybody wants in the long run. And I just want to thank everybody for their effort.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Okay, so I'm going to wrap it up, because budget meetings are supposed to be quick. So with that, I just want to reiterate that one man's trash is one man's trash. So I'm not going to cash shade on our township council, because as Mr. DeGeorge says, I'm appreciative of the last two years for them picking up our trash that we were able to afford our Class III officers. You know, we have our issues, they have theirs, so I'm not going to blame them for our Class III officer situation. So, and Mr. Peters, I'm going to go back to you, because I have to say, I'm a little heated on this, you know, just because we eliminated the Class III officers, they do cost us more money than our SSOs, our school safety officers are retired officers who carry firearms in a uniform in our schools, and we're bringing a couple more on, and just because we did away with Class III officers doesn't mean that we're not looking to put other...
officers doesn't mean that we're not looking to put other officers in. And like Mr. Scannell said, it wasn't just, okay, we're done with it, and we're just gonna disregard this. And we had this conversation. And, and I have to say, you're acting as though you had no inclination that, that, that it was, this was, this was going to happen. And you're, and you're thrusting upon us, who made that decision? Well, the decision was made as a collective agreement with administration and you and us, that the trash and the officers was a huge thing, it was a huge number, okay? So, for you to sit there and act surprised that this was done, it astounds me, because you knew this. And, and you could say you didn't, but if you didn't, then you're not informed, all right? Just as we missed the paras on Slide 4, but we're working to correct that. And we're gonna work to correct the, the school safety officers, because, yeah, it's paramount that we have them. And is it gonna happen? Yeah, it's gonna happen. So, and that's all I have to say about it. So with that, I'm done, and motion to...
Frank, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it'll be two minutes. So, are you saying, there's a, I know there's a difference between class-three and school safety officers.
Yes.
So in this budget, are we gonna be able to get the school safety officers?
We have three. We have three, and we are working feverishly on filling the schools with the rest of them. So...
There's two more to make it...
Yeah.
We will, we will...
They're our people, not the town.
Right, they're ours, and they're cheaper for us to have than it is to have the police department involved with their officers, because there's things that we have to buy to township officers that we don't have to purchase for our officers. Correct, Mr. George?
That is correct.
Right, so we can save money, but yet, it, listen, it doesn't make a difference what uniform they're wearing, they're in, it's the same capacity.
And I think clarification for anyone that hasn't dealt with them, you have, I have, correct me if I'm wrong, school safety officers are retired police officers?
Yes.
That still have a permit to carry a gun.
Yes, right. They are, they are armed officers in our schools.
Right.
And they're uniformed, right, Frank?
They have our uniform.
Okay.
No, not a police station.
I know, but they are uniformed, right?
Yes.
No. They have a Lacey Township school shirt on.
Mr. President. Sir, Mr. Vice President.
One last comment.
Go ahead.
Next year, I would like the board to remember that what I did last year was to have a roundtable discussion before the final approval of the budget. This year, I believe that was done too soon. Next year, would everybody keep in mind that that should be done after the first, the preliminary budget is introduced, and closer to this meeting, because then we could be having all these discussions, and the public could be part of it. So keep that in mind for next year, that this, the discussion here is very good, but if we could've had that like last week, then you'd be saying, we could really do something about it.
Well, the first year, you had three, and this year, we only did one.
No, two, Ms. Claus, we had two the first year, then one.
Oh, two? All right, none and then one.[1765.86]